Good evening and welcome to the Asleta Independent School District's meeting of the Board of Trustees. The meeting of the Board of Trustees is a meeting of the board that the public is allowed to attend. As provided by ISD policy, BED, we invite members of the public to make comments during the citizens' input portion at the start of the meeting according to the instructions provided with the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into discussion on matters in citizens' input. We remind everyone that this is a board meeting often attended by students and ask that we all conduct ourselves in a manner that best represents the values and traditions of the Asleta Independent School District. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:00 PM. We have a quorum with Shane Hagerty, Chris Hernandez, Charlie Bustillos, Mike Dwyer, Connie Woodruff, Katherine Lucero, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Trustee Hagerty, please introduce our junior ROTC.
Thank you, sir. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors, reciting the pledges of allegiance, and then posting the colors. The colors tonight are being presented by the junior ROTC color guard from the glorious, the mighty Parkland High School. The color guard commander is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Damian Castro. The other color guard members are Cadet Captain Leonardo Aguilar, Cadet First Sergeant Oscar Marcus, Cadet Corporal Roman Delgado, and our pledge leader from the Parkland Middle School is seventh grader Dylan Van Leeuwen. Will you please stand for the presentation of colors, the reciting of the pledges of allegiance, the Texas Pledge of Allegiance, and a moment of silence? And please remain standing until the cadets have departed.
Forward, march! Left. Left. Right, left. Left. Parkside, march! Color, hold! Outward, left, hut! Reset, hut!
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, please join me in the pledge of the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Outward, hut! Forward, march! Forward, march! Left. Parkside, march! Color, hold! Hit, hut! 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 Reset, hut! Forward, march! Hit, hut! Forward, march, left. 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 Right, left. Left. Color, hold! Outward, hut! Right, hut! Forward, march, left. Left. Left.
Dr. De La Torre, do we have recognitions and introductions this evening?
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, esteemed guests, we do. At this time, I'd like to introduce Chief Human Capital Management Officer, Mrs. Bobby Russell Garcia, to lead in our recognitions and introductions this evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. De La Torre. We have four recognitions for you this evening. At this time, we ask all trustees to please come to the front of the dais for the presentation. Audience members, please remain seated until the recognitions are complete. Thank you. Our first recognition is in honor of J.M. Hanks High School softball coach Shelley Prather. This past spring, Coach Prather earned a record-breaking 500th win of her coaching career on opening day when the Lady Knights defeated Eastlake High School 7-0. By the time the season was over, Coach Prather's win record had climbed to 537. The team advanced to the Sweet Sixteen with 38 wins and three losses, and she was named the El Paso Times 2023 Softball Coach of the Year. In her 31 years at Hanks High School, Coach Prather has led the Lady Knights to 13 district championships, 12 playoff appearances, and reached the Sweet Sixteen twice, in 2015 and again in 2023. Please help me welcome and congratulate our phenomenal J.M. Hanks High School softball coach, Shelley Prather. She is accompanied by Principal Ruben Cadenah. Congratulations to Coach Prather. Our second recognition honors our best-in-the-nation Beller Highlander fashion design team, which won its second straight national championship in fashion design and technology at the National Technology Student Association Competition in Kentucky. These Highlanders are now back-to-back national champions after beating more than 50 other teams from across the country. In keeping with this year's "The Oscars" theme, two students are wearing their award-winning ensembles for you tonight. The first is a hand-sewn gold satin outfit embellished with lace floral appliques and includes tailored pants. The second is a jet-black pantsuit with a crossover bodice, and the student is also wearing beads that students created using a 3D printer. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome our national champions from Beller High School's fashion design team, beginning with class of 2023 graduate Mia Castillo. Senior Gabriela Urbina. Junior Claire Panuelos. And Junior Norma Gay. They are accompanied by teacher Rita Sanchez and Principal Jake Valtiera. Let's hear it one more time for the Highlanders. At this time, I'd like to invite our Superintendent, Dr. Xavier De La Torre, to the podium for our next recognition in honor of our Board of Trustees.
You know, every year we get to honor the Board of Trustees, but tonight is extra special, and it is my honor to share a few words in respect and admiration of the remarkable achievements of our journey of our Board of esteemed trustees. Just a few months ago, our board was not only named the 2023 Regional Honor Board, but recently was named the 2023 Texas Honor Board. And what that means is they are one of five finalists out of 1,200 school districts in the state of Texas. And they will be competing at the end of September to be named the 2023 Outstanding School Board. If you can only imagine what goes into that. There are 1,200 school boards in the state of Texas. They've already won. They're one of five in the entire state. And the reason they're here, and the reason they've been recognized and nominated, is because of the accomplishments of past board members, current board members, and future board members. And it's about their commitment to kids, their commitment to students, their commitment to our future. So they all share in this recognition. Their confidence, their trust, their support of their administrative team, their courage during unprecedented times, and they have experienced times that no other board has experienced, starting with the Walmart massacre, followed quickly by the pandemic, and the challenges just kept coming. So they have had an experience unlike any other board. They have persevered, they have demonstrated courage, they have been at the forefront for almost a decade now. They've embraced and let our district through these challenges. They have compassion, confidence, they're forward-thinking visionaries. They've helped steer this district to new heights of excellence. They are the foundation of the Renaissance that the school district has experienced over the last 10 years, where they've reimagined, rebuilt, reconstructed this school district that was once 65 buildings, almost 50,000 students. Today, they've created a great learning environment for 36,000 students in 50 buildings, but the buildings are modern marvels, state-of-the-art facilities, environments, and spaces that emulate the world that will welcome them. They have been the backbone of what it's taken to be the only A-rated school district in the city. Tonight, we honor not just the award they've earned, but their spirit, collaboration, insight, and the impact that they've had, not just on the students that have been in school while they have led, but for generations of students in the future that will feel their impact. As a token of our appreciation and gratitude, we'd like to provide you just a small gift, a small token of our appreciation, our support, our guidance, and a recognition of your passion for the public school system. We're confident and convinced that with you at our helm, the Asleta Independent School District is in great hands. We'll work hard every day to get better with your leadership. So at this time, I want to congratulate all of you. On behalf of the team, all of our leadership members, not just here at the central office, but out at every one of the 50 schools that we operate, I am sure that I am representing them when I tell you thank you very much.
Let's give another big round of applause to our 2023 Texas Honor Board. Congratulations. And now I'd like to invite our Board of Trustees President, Mr. Cruz Ochoa, to the podium for our final recognition tonight.
Thank you, Dr. De La Torre, for your kind words. I'm trying to find out what the clock symbolizes. Is it our time spent, our time in the future, or the time now? All of it. And we have really appreciated everybody's support, and on behalf of the board, I think we are very honored to have been recognized for this tonight. It is... For me, it was never expected. I just thought that, like I tell everybody, we're just doing our job, what we were elected to do. We come up here, we spend our time, but all of us, all of us, have invested a lot of our energy and our time, which I think that symbolizes as well, to make Asleta the best. But for one reason and one reason only. It's for us kids, because they are our future, and they will be our future in years to come. Everything we've done today will have a great impact on them. You know, my little girls, they're first graders, and they're going through school here. They will benefit from everything that has happened over the last few years for them. So again, thank you, Dr. De La Torre. Thank you, everybody, and we appreciate this recognition. So, again, good evening, everyone. On behalf of the entire Board of Trustees, we would like to offer our warmest congratulations to Dr. De La Torre for being named the 2023 Superintendent of the Year by Region 19. In his nine years as superintendent, Dr. De La Torre has transformed our district, Asleta ISD, into one of the best districts in the state. He not only elevated student achievement, but he led a bold renovation and reconstruction of our aging schools into modern learning environments for the benefit of our students. Dr. De La Torre, you have made a profound impact on our community. Thank you for your dedication and commitment to our schools, community, and, more importantly, our students. It has been an honor to work closely with you, preparing our students for a lifetime of success through education. It is my pleasure at this time to offer congratulations to you for being named the Region 19 Superintendent of the Year. We would also like to provide you with a token of our gratitude tonight for all you do for our district. Once again, congratulations on this well-deserved recognition, and thank you for your relentless pursuit of excellence. Thank you.
Let's hear it one more time for Dr. De La Torre, our Regional Superintendent of the Year. This concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
If you don't mind, we're going to take a short break before we get started. Thank you. Secretary Lucero, do we have citizen input this evening?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you. Dr. De La Torre, do you have any reports for us this evening?
Yes, President Ochoa, members of the board, we've had, to say the least, we've had a terrific summer. We've had a terrific week. We've been featured in the media because of our willingness to entertain a new program called Prisms for Math, which uses virtual reality to supplement and to support instruction in mathematics and in the hard sciences, specifically general mathematics at the middle school, pre-algebra, algebra, geometry, and then in the sciences, biology, physics, and currently working on chemistry. And it's a supplemental experience for students in both mathematics and sciences that allow them to use virtual reality to answer the question that students typically ask, and that is, when will we ever use this stuff? And they use other more colorful phrases for math and science. This program, and we're going to have the benefit of meeting the founder, the creator, the CEO of Prisms, a young lady with a very, very impressive background, graduated from, I believe, Irvine High School in California, went to MIT, earned a baccalaureate in engineering, computer science, went on to Boston College where she earned advanced degrees, and then eventually found her way into the New York Department of Education, which is the equivalent of a school district in Texas, except that it has over a million students. Also worked for the Boston Public School System, primarily in mathematics, science, professional development for teachers. And she recognized two deficits that drove her passion. One, students in general, even students who were successful in high school in taking math and science courses, oftentimes didn't understand how to apply what they had learned and what they had mastered in some cases. The second point was that she noticed that only two in every 10 students were women, young women, and that bothered her. So she has set out on a mission she has a passion for, making more and more people, but especially women, love math and science. And so she's developed this three-dimensional experience for students who are given the opportunity not just to learn mathematics and science, but to apply it to real-world problems, including climate change, the melting of the polar ice caps, and a variety of other situations and problems that are real for our planet and for our people. And so Anarupa is with us via the screen. There she is, the brilliant young lady, and she's going to take a few minutes to just tell you a little bit about herself, her company, and her mission, and she is an impressive young lady. Are you there, dear?
Yes, can you hear me, Dr. De La Torre?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Good evening, everybody. I'm so sorry that I can't be there with you in person, but right now I'm spending all my days in classrooms with our teachers and students. I'm Anarupa Ganguly, the founder and CEO of Prisms, and it's such a privilege every time to be back with your community in Isla de la. So what I was hoping to do is just to take a... Dr. De La Torre, you gave a fantastic introduction, so I'm actually not... I'm going to skip my own introduction and jump to the learning methodology that I've designed for a whole new way of experiencing mathematics. And to do so, I'm going to just share a few slides. Hopefully you can quickly see what I can see. And as you just mentioned, with a very quick introduction, my journey started as an electrical engineer and computer scientist at MIT, and I saw huge drop-offs of our young female students. It went from 10% of my freshman year to, I'm so sorry, 24% of my freshman year to 10% of us graduating to go into graduate school and having everybody disappear, which is what really convicted me to understand what was happening at the K-12 math and science level that causes such drop-offs. I taught high school, Algebra I, Algebra II, and physics in the Boston Public Schools to really understand and be a part of the solution, and then found myself in a number of roles, including the Director of Math in Boston, overseeing CNI for the City of New York, and ultimately really realizing what you all just heard is that we don't have the tools to close the learning gaps at scale, because they don't scale the top predictors of success. We now know that people that go on to be successful in post-secondary STEM, the number-one predictor of those people is your ability to think spatially, rotate 3D objects in your mind, and think in the 3D world, and number two, your ability to abstract up from physical experiences. And yet, but the majority of the tools that were crossing my desk didn't look like that. They looked like this. Kids were memorizing equations. They were memorizing properties about that equation. They were then memorizing if-then statements, then running those procedures over and over and over again. So our kids were leaving with reflexes, but they weren't leaving with any sort of understanding, intuition, or developing these core competencies that I just shared. So before just jumping into the solution, if I were to really summarize the problem statement at bay, is that existing tools aren't aligned, but why? It's because we repeatedly digitized learning mechanisms that work for about 12% of the population. We digitized online video libraries, online lecture tools, online drilling-kill tools. We added some animals. We added some coins. We added some gamification. But we never really changed or went after what is the right way to learn math, and how do we scale and grow that? So I started Prisms about three years ago to build the world's first spatial learning platform, where our children get to embody themselves in core real-world problems before they then go from that physical scenario to ascribe language, notation, and build mathematical models of that physical experience. To give you a little bit of an imagination of what that looks like, we built for virtual reality, because virtual reality does two things for us. It allows students to leave their four walls and go to a world and go to the seat of the problem. Problems don't transpire in classrooms. They transpire in communities. The affordable housing crisis isn't happening in a classroom. It's happening in cities, where people live. And so really kind of being able to take children to those places and have them experience it before solving those problems is a core tenet of the program. So let's take that case of exponential functions I just showed you a few slides ago, where right now kids memorize equations and properties. What does it look like? Well, they put their headset on, and they're transported to a world. In this particular place, the world is a food hall, and they're buying their food. They're taking the environment, and there's a mayor's announcement, and she says, "There's an alarming growth rate of a virus. Stay safe." And the kids go, "Wait, what? What just happened?" And they get the power on their watch to go back in time and see those behaviors that were playing out. How was the virus spreading? So they say, "Oh, I had heard her sneeze. I realized there's transmission. I saw her friend walk back. Another four people could have gotten it." So it's a physical understanding of multiplicative growth, not an intellectual one. We haven't used the word equation, function, factor, nothing. Students then accept a mission. How many weeks until the hospitals in your community are going to reach capacity? And so that question, kids connect that physical understanding to 3D simulations outside their body. They then connect that to tactile data visualization, so you can go from the physical context to 3D representations. They then begin to collect all their data into a 2D chart, so they can begin to analyze it. And they see the five, the five times five, the five times five times five, and they think, "Oh, my goodness, I remember the cashier spreading it to five people. That number five has real value and meaning now." From which they create the equation y is equal to five to the t, from which they generalize to y is equal to a b to the x. So that through line, going from physicality, simulations, data visualization, charts, tables, and equations is very scalable. So we set out to build all of secondary math and science, because we believe that children should learn these disciplines entirely through problem-based learning and inquiry. So to give you a sense of, I gave you what it looks like in math, let me build your imagination of what it looks like in science. To learn about cellular energy, which is just photosynthesis and cellular respiration, things that kids just memorize. They'll just memorize the equations. They really have no idea of what is happening. Kids begin their time underwater, and they begin to see that as time is going forward, all the coral is dying, so it's becoming white and bleached. Why is that happening? They then take their Prism Saber and they start cutting the coral to see that the dead coral don't have any of this green substance called zooplankton in it, but the healthy coral do. Why? They then embark on building an entire underwater monitoring system where they can monitor how much zooplankton do you need to keep these ecosystems healthy? And to do that, you learn photosynthesis, which is what zooplankton does, and the coral takes the output of that to do cellular respiration, the symbiotic relationship in nature where one goes and the other goes as well. And so they're not memorizing photosynthesis. They are doing it. They're placing the sunlight. They're placing the enzymes, and they're doing the entire process through which they construct these relationships. What I will share with you is, when we first started to put this out, there was so much demand for this type of learning methodology across the curriculum. So we are, across all of Grade 7 to 11, math and science, to start to build bonds between math and science teachers and to build bonds between grade levels. So we are starting in Isla de la with Grade 7 math. We're focused on in Grade 7, it's those core understandings of equations, inequalities, ratios, rational operations. This is where learning begins to really erode. We lose kids in Grade 4, Grade 7, Algebra I, and the first year of college, which is why we want to really start with those seventh-grade standards. And then Algebra I, which your students will be using. Geometry won't be using... Your students won't be using this year. Algebra II as well, but your ninth graders will also be using our biology library, and of course, we have a lot of the other subject areas as well. The only other thing that I would say in closing is, this was very much built for teachers, and the instructional model was meticulously designed so that any public school teacher could pick this up and not be frightened by the technology or frightened by the hardware and have a clear path to what it looks like in her classroom. And let me just kind of give you a few lines around that vision. Though kids are in headsets, teachers are not. Teachers have a web-based dashboard, because they have to maintain the physical safety of a classroom, and so they're using that to monitor where every kid is and provide feedback. And we've created robust lesson guides, slides, prereq checks, everything that a teacher needs to lessonize, because VR isn't for every day. If you think about your life, there are these really memorable moments, the day you got married, the day of your firstborn. And so these are these core moments in the unit where kids learn why they're learning that topic, why do you learn linear functions, why do you learn systems of equations? And they're physically derived, that foundational concept, so that once the headsets go to the next teacher and go to the next classroom, you can now use some of the other materials in your unit, your paper-pencil materials, your web materials, and they actually now can be affected, because the foundation that they stand on is physical, visceral, and highly, highly memorable. And last but not the least, this is a pedagogical tool. It's not a tech tool, so we are investing heavily in teachers and your coaches. So we were so grateful to run your first two teacher institutes and get teachers doing problem-based learning using VR. We'll be coming back to your, hopefully to your classrooms. We got to visit one on Monday and begin to see it come alive with your teachers and your coaches. But I will pause there. I know that we have a really proud Prisms teacher there to share a little bit more about her experience, but the one thing I will say is, this is the beginning of a movement. Math education has been in need of reform for decades. The system has failed millions and millions of kids, kids who were creatives, kids who were thoughtful, but they never found how to express their thinking, because they didn't think in just symbols and words and equations. They thought creatively about the world. And so what we're very early and quickly finding is that when you allow new modalities, new ways for people to express themselves through their bodies, through movement, through haptics, through sound, through these multimodal associations of thought versus, again, just words or an equation, you're going to see massive impact on student impact and student identity in the mathematical sciences. So thank you for being a lighthouse in the state of Texas. It's been an honor to work with your team thus far, and we can't wait to establish what this new generation of computing, i.e. spatial computing, is going to afford for our pedagogical ideals. So thank you.
Before I introduce the teacher, teachers that have gone through the process and the training and are starting to introduce it and execute in the classroom, does anyone have any questions for Anarupa? Please, Trustee Hernandez.
Yes, thank you so much for that presentation. I have had the honor of trying it on. It was fantastic. And could you tell us a little bit about how new this is and how many districts in the country have Prisms so far? Just curious about where we are with this technology.
Yeah. So the MetaQuest 1, which was the first headset that was a standalone mobile VR headset, came out in 2018. That's when I realized that this field is about to fundamentally change. And the MetaQuest 2 and the Pico Neo 3, which are the classed devices that you all will be using, those just came out about, I think, a year and a half ago. So you are really at the cutting edge, and you may know that Apple just announced their new headset. And the reason I say this is that we are now at the beginning of natural interfaces and being able to kind of go between virtual worlds to augmented worlds to mixed reality. And what that's going to allow us to do is really, again, like learn with our bodies, whereas before, everything was through a singular screen. So we re-raised a generation of children that were always looking straight at a screen. And so in terms of number of districts, right this academic year, we will be launching with 196 school systems across the U.S. in 36 states. But just to kind of put that number into perspective, we started with 14 school systems winter of 2021, so just about a year and a half, and it has taken off like wildfire, and it's entirely been led by teachers and by really forward-thinking superintendents like your own. And so in the state of Texas, you are amongst the first 10 districts this year, this fall, Austin, Fort Worth, Uall, Umbel. I can give you the final list, but I think it's like about 10 districts total that are getting started in the state of Texas, and Isla de la was one of, I think, you guys came right after Austin, I see. So we're very early in this movement, and as a ribbon on that thought, your teachers and your leaders will very much be a national model for others, which is why I was there on Monday filming your teacher sentiments. Teachers want to take risks, but often the system does not support them to do that. Not every district is Isla de la, where you have the systems in place to truly try new methodologies and have the coaching and the apparatus in there to support the elevation of the teaching profession and for teachers to get better at their craft. So I say that because as we elevate the voice of your teachers across the US of saying like, "She can do it, how is she doing it?", it's going to give a lot of hope to new teachers in districts around, around the country. But short answer is, top 10 in Texas and we're only across 196 school districts in the United States, and so you are truly among the first.
Well, thank you for that. That is super exciting to know that we are among the first and that we'll be showing, uh, really the whole country about how fantastic this is, and I thank you for your work and for your passion. Thank you so much.
Um, hello. I wanted to, to say that I'm super excited, this is really, really, um, it, it hits close to home because math is something that I've always struggled with, my children struggle with, I have, all girls except for my son now, but, um, I'm really excited that we're going to be able to, to tap into the importance of the different ways of learning, using all of our senses for the, for these kids, we'll be able to use all of their senses. And I really feel, I believe in this program that's going to change, um, the way kids are learning, the way teachers are able to, to express that learning. But it's going to impact a child, they're going to learn to love math because they're going to understand it using all of their senses. So I'm excited for this program, thank you to Dela Torre and, and our leadership team for, for thinking forward and, and always thinking of our kids and, and the different ways that they're able to learn because not understanding math impacts you for the remainder of your life. So having that foundation early on in this new way, an important way, is, is really exciting, so thank you.
I, I really appreciate, I, I, I know that there wasn't a question there, but I wanted to thank you for, for sharing that for a couple of reasons. One is that, yes, it's now well researched and well known, that everything behind that, that front part of our brain, our prefrontal cortex, is wired for learning via our senses. So the majority of our brain is wired for learning by a touch, by sound, by feeling, by, by tactile, I mean tactile is one that just disappears. Our kids start with a little bit of algebra tiles, but by the time you get to geometry, Algebra Two, precalculus, it's gone. Kids aren't touching, they're not moving, they're not experiencing. And like Dr. Dela Torre said at the beginning, you ask every kid, "Why are you learning this?", they can't tell you. So the purpose and the utility of their education, especially math class, the real estate value is on the ground. It's just to get past the test, which you fast know that once you leave our K-12 system, that is not what you are, that's not going to be the predictor of your success. And so the last thing I wanted to really highlight that you, that you said in, um, in a really beautiful way is, Algebra One, as Bob Moses said, is a civil rights issue of our time. It's one of the main predictors of, of future life wages, of the, uh, of access to 60% of our jobs in our economy. You will be shut out from that if you are not performing at the highest levels. And when I say highest levels, I don't mean just our standardized tests, I mean true understanding. It's your ability to create knowledge, not just your ability to reproduce what other people have created. So thank you so much for highlighting, you know, what low proficiencies or, or superficial understandings in middle school math and high school math do to the future like burning potential, frankly, and, and impact on, on the type of jobs you can acquire, um, and what it will do to bring senses back into the classroom instead of staring at screens.
Ms., Ms. Grongoli, um, I'm Trustee Bustillos, I did try it out, I'm a Gen Xer and I failed terribly at it. So, but I know I need practice, I would have definitely liked this back in my day, I think I'd have done a better job with it, but thank you so much. Um, I just got a question for you, for the movement that you were talking about and, and the kids that are using it at our school, how do you see this in the future, colleges using this? How soon do you see that coming up?
Yeah, it's a great question. So we're already seeing a lot of corporate training, so a lot of companies are beginning, beginning to use it. So they're actually using it to upscale their workforce, upscale them in new, in new technologies, in new procedures, um, from soft skills to, to hard skills. At the university level, uh, we're beginning to see adoption, but I, it, it's, what's, what's fascinating is, I have found that K-12 is more innovative than higher ed, like, you know, in many K-12, um, systems have moved away from lecture-style learning and trying to innovate, whereas higher ed has not, in the same way, which is why, um, as soon as I finish the middle school and high school libraries, I'll be releasing all of calculus, multivariable differential equations, linear algebra, all of core, the first two years of biochem and physics, so we can get our kiddos in those first two years of college because you have a massive Weeder program in university, as you know. A lot of children, they're not children, they're 18 years old at that point, but a lot of students drop out in their first year of college. So we ourselves will be pushing into higher ed, uh, we will be releasing, um, a massive beta, uh, V1 program in fall 2024. In terms of hardware adoption, hardware follows value. No K-12 districts were, um, uh, adopting VR hardware until Prisms put the content out. So I think you're going to see the same thing at the college level. As soon as we start building high-quality content, high-quality experiences, training professors, breaking their thinking around lecture-style learning, we're going to begin to see that level of adoption. Um, I did want to respond to, I'm so sorry that you didn't have the best experience. Do you mind if I, do you mind if I ask you, did you do the tutorial?
I started and I was asked to pick up some canisters, I was supposed to, I was supposed to make some chemicals and put it into the pond. I could not pick up the canisters for whatever reason, but, uh, I tried, but, no, it was, it was a great experience, I, I did enjoy it, I just need to practice a little bit more. Yes. So thank you so much, I appreciate that.
I'm ha, I'm happy to come give you a tutorial. That, I was telling Brenda when I came on Monday, Isleta is my, has become my second home. I, I think I'm, I think I'm coming like every, every couple of weeks at this point, so...
Well, my wife teaches it, so I'll maybe get her, you know, one of these days to show me how to do it too, so, or I'll, I'll take your, I'll, I'll take, whenever you're in, I'll come in and you can show me. Thank you.
Sounds wonderful, thank you.
Anybody else?
We have, uh, Dr. Brenda Chacon. Oh, you have a question?
Yes.
Okay, Cruz.
I was just being polite and asking of anybody else before I got cut off. I was privileged to witness your presentation at, I don't even remember when you brought that, brought this, uh, Prism, um, to us, and, uh, at that time, being, uh, being who I am, I started, I was very impressed. But then I started thinking of all the endless possibilities that we could use, um, this for our learning community, our learning environment for our students. The applications, I think, are, are, at this point, we're just scratching, scratching the surface. And, uh, I just want to know, do you have a research and development, um, um, team that is trying to bring the real-world problems into the classroom? Maybe at a higher level, I mean, um, I know physics is one of them, and I think I saw that as well, but, uh, I just want to know, do, are you working on more research and development of these applications so as we evolve and the students get comfortable with it, that they can evolve as well and, and, and start, uh, even thinking of new ways to use this?
Yeah, it's a great question. So right now, we've built, you know, somewhere in, in the ballpark of 40 to 50 experiences spanning applications of algebra, geometry, middle school, Algebra Two, precalculus, biology, and chemistry. We will be releasing the middle school life sciences and middle school physical sciences and high school physics, uh, on the, at the top of the new year. And then we will be adding a lot more additional modules to the existing libraries. So for example, algebra right now only has five modules, but we'll be adding additional ones, um, additional topics. And every single module has a different context, right? So our, our functions module that we just built, you're in West Virginia, taking all the wasted corn that the state produces to create ethanol to, to power, um, Charleston, New, uh, West Virginia. You are, you learn solids of rotation, um, to look at new modular housing technologies that will bring the cost of building down so more people can access affordable housing. So they, we look at applications across every field of study, from renewables to new, new generation architecture and sustainability to high-speed trains, you learn rate of changes on high-speed trains. So kids get a lot of exposure to many, 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 many different real-world applications and every new module we build on a core concept is a new real-world context. Um, the last thing that I'll say is, um, connected to higher ed, when I begin to build out, uh, calculus, upper division physics, uh, differential, um, linear algebra, and some of those upper maths, data science, I'm building data science because, you know, a lot of the new frameworks that are coming out in the state of California and the state of Virginia are requiring data science as a, as a key, um, key part of the curriculum as the AI revolution truly takes, takes hold of this next generation of, of thinkers and entrepreneurs. So it, that data science, um, uh, library will be releasing, uh, next summer because a lot of districts have been asking us for it. We are also getting a lot of requests to build a core curriculum because my teachers are like, you know, you have such a rich view of problem-based learning and then kids come back out and they're kind of back to business as usual. So we will be releasing, um, our first version of the full core, that's going to be a mix of VR, really strong spatialized web experiences and paper pencil, and really build the arc for how do you go from physicality to 2D representations and then for speed, efficiency, algebraic manipulation, complexity, paper pencil, because every modality has a different benefit. Paper pencil is great for speed, doing things fast, stream of consciousness, writing. VR is not as great for algebraic manipulation, VR is excellent for embodiment and learning and understanding concepts for the first time so that you structurally get it. So we will really begin to build out the full 180-day calendar, so there's a real science around which modes you use when for what learning objective.
Yes, I think, I think you're, you're right about that. Paper and pencil are great, but if you can visualize it, see it, and see its application, I think it'll, um, us being who we are, humans, it'll, it'll be stuck in our memory a lot longer than a paper and pencil. I took all those courses, differential equations, calc, calculus, higher math and everything, but ask me about it and right now it's like, because I never had to apply it. And, but if you have that, it makes an imprint in your brain that some of it will, will, you will retain over the years. And I'm so excited because I just see endless possibilities for, for, for our kids. Maybe they're not all going to be engineers or scientists, but even for real-world applications, you know, it's just, it's just, it's just phenomenal. And I want to thank you for that. And I'm sure you don't get much sleep, so...
No.
No.
No, I love what you said there because it's not about creating, making every child an engineer. Because if you look at the real-world concepts, like, our, our kids learn rational operations by being a stock market trader. There's so many of our kids that don't understand how the stock market works. They, um, they learn, um, uh, statistics and, and, and linear regression by, uh, by stepping into the role of a city councilwoman and looking at the growth of landfills over time in her district to make investments and waste management capabilities. So we really look across our society, from public policy to different decision-making, um, to just different vocations and things that, financial literacy, that a lot of our students, they're not able to invest their money properly and they, they, you know, with, there are so many communities that have, don't have the same sort of knowledge around, on wealth, on wealth building. So really democratizing access to all types of experiences that are going to give them that exposure to every aspect of our society and economy in this very kind of experiential way. So thank you so much for understanding that and, and realizing that it's not about making everybody a scientist. We do have a lot of applications in science and tech, but we also have a lot of applications to just everyday life and what it means to be, um, living in a functioning democracy.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? If not, Dr. Dela Torre.
Thank you, President Ocho, we've got, uh, a couple of our practitioners with us today, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Brenda Chacon and she can introduce, uh, some folks from Riverside.
I used a step. Good evening, President Ocho, Dr. Dela Torre, members of the board. Um, I am on the step, so you guys can all see me. With me today, I have two fabulous teachers from Riverside High School of Biology who have already dived in, um, were first pioneers and without any fear, they said, "We're going to try it." And, um, they are definitely leaders and we appreciate everything they've done, along with our teams, from academics to innovative technology who have also supported this endeavor across the board. Anaruba was so impressed that our teachers, our students are already using it. They didn't, you know, usually it takes a little while, as from her experience in other districts, but not Isleta, they dived in right away. So I'm going to pass it over to them so they can tell you the experience, um, that they've had with their students and their own pedagogy in the classroom.
Good evening, I am Mrs. Tucker and I have here Ms. Portillo with me. Um, I just want to say, um, really quickly, I'm very inspired every time Ms. Anaruba talks and I'm just very grateful to be one of the first, um, teachers to be using this in our district. Um, it's just been really beneficial in my class and, and we're very grateful for that.
Oh, Ms. Portillo, like Ms. Tucker said already, and, uh, your creation that you have done for us, where our classroom has changed, like I was saying to Ms. Tucker, whenever, the first, the first day that we went to the introduction to Prisms, we said that this was, was a turning point for education.
I, I, I wanted to say that, I wanted to say that I, you inspire me.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, the teachers that, that I work with, I mean, someone asked me once, like, "You don't, you don't sleep at all." And I said, "I, I can't sleep because, um, I've seen what our teachers go into classrooms with every day. We send them with wiffle bats and how you all have persevered and you continue to work like tirelessly for children, um, it's inspiring to me." So thank you so much for being that pioneer and showing the world, this is what it is to get kids up out of their chair and stand up in math class and solve great problems and, 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 and think with their hands and think with their bodies. Like, thank you so much for sending me that video clip because I, I think that, uh, uh, that your leadership team have mentioned to you that I'm going to be doing a video on, on Isleta and sharing it with the whole world post-Labor Day to show the, the kind of the heroic leadership of, of each, uh, each member of your team and your teachers. So, sorry, I didn't mean to get emotional, but you tell me that, that you find, you know, what I've done inspiring and I think it's tenfold with, with how inspired I am by, by you all.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, it's because you've already been applying in, in the classroom and you are the first, which is great, I mean, but always, always being the fir, or being the first provides its challenges as well. Um, I just want to hear from you both, um, what is the, the biggest challenge that you experienced using Prism in the classroom? Anything?
Um, I needed some time to think about that one because, um, honestly, I've just seen it as a benefit. I could just see maybe, um, the prep time for it, um, I could see as a little bit challenging, but once the students get it, they understand it the whole way. So the, that's the only thing that we just had to take time to prep them to do the tutorials so that they make sure how to clean the, the, the headsets correctly, so make sure they know how to grab things in the actual virtual reality world, um, was the most challenging part, but we just did that for one day with all of our classes. The following day, they already knew how to log in, how to use their username, password, and I'm pretty sure by the next time they use it, they already going to be pros at it.
Well, that's understandable, uh, some, using something new has always been a challenge for all of us, no matter what it is. But, um, what is the reaction of your students, not only the ones in your classroom, but other students that are not, not in your classroom?
So, we have had past students from, we, we are now TT freshmen, but we have our former students that are now sophomores, and they learned that we are using VRs with our freshmen and they're like, "Miss, why are we not using our VRs? Why, why didn't we use them last year?" We're like, "They just purchased them this year," uh, but they want to try it too, like, they see and they want to try it too. And we tell, we tell them that eventually it's going to go to the other science, which is chemistry and physics eventually too. And they also mentioned, uh, evolution too? No, um, environmental science, so eventually it's going to go to all those sciences. So they, they are going to try it some, at some point.
And that's what I want to hear is that you having it in the classroom is, uh, is promoting , uh, other students, they want to know what's happening, what is it about? They are starting to say, "Hey, you know, I, I think I could do well in that class as well," which is, is really phenomenal, I, you know, uh, it's, it's, it's a growth that I, I think is good for all, all of our students in our schools. And, and hopefully, down a year or whatever it takes, we can implement it, uh, you know, from middle school all the way through high school, where everybody will get to experience that. And then once they go on to higher education, they're going to have a big advantage over other students that have just not experienced that. And that's why I, I think that's what I was hoping, that other students would be so interested and... And I'm sure they're clamoring for next year to be in your class. All the freshmen will certainly get the notice that, to be in your classrooms, so.
Yes. I had seen a video where they had mentioned that the classroom has not changed in over 100 years, and I feel right now is that moment where we're going to change how classroom settings are. So I'm really excited for the future.
I think, you know, I was temporarily, just, you know, a short period of time, a teacher, but they've always asked us, bring real-world problems into the classroom so the kids will understand why are they learning this, or why are they have to study this, or why do they have to study algebra, you know? But having it in the real-world concept presented to them through Prism, I think just makes, it's light years ahead of what we would have done with pencil and paper. Because, you know, it just doesn't register when you have to, oh, Mr., do I have to do research? But when you present it to them and you say da, 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 wow, it just, it just opens up their mind to other endless possibilities. But thank you, thank you so much for taking the initiative to dive into this, because it's not an easy thing to do, but, you know, you've done it. And by the end of next year, you're going to be the experts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Where are you at, Anurupa? I'm asking her where she's at, because who knows, it could be midnight where she's at in the world.
I am right now in Annapolis, Maryland, but I have a six-am flight to Umbold.
Wow. You know what we're going to do? We're going to thank you. We appreciate you giving us the opportunity, and we'll see you next time. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for encouraging me to do this. I'll see you soon. To the future, an incredible, an incredible year for math education. Good night.
Our next presentation is, I believe, our quarterly update on CARESOLIS. It's all right, Amy. Let's, he may or may not be there. There he is. But he's in California, so it's only 6:10 instead of 9:10. How are you?
That's right. I'm doing well. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Dr. Latorre, President Ochoa, and members of the board, great to see you all. Thanks for having me. Good to be back virtually. Looking forward to when I can come out in person again eventually. But we have some exciting updates. I know that last time we connected, we had a couple of specific requests in terms of comparing year to year and looking at some of the high severity cases as well. So we were able to gather some of that data for you and put that together. So I'm going to go ahead and pull up my slides and get you those updates. All right. Go through some of the brief overview. Mission statement, we are tireless allies on a mission to make access to mental health care easier than ever before. We exist to help you connect students, school staff, and family members to the support they need. We've been partnered with Isleta for a couple of years now, and we've grown a lot in that time. We're now serving over 8,000 schools across the country, mostly K-12, some higher ed as well. Over 6 million students have access to our service, but when we partner with an institution like your district, the service is not only available to the students, it's also available to their families, it's available to your staff and your staff loved ones as well, which means universal access throughout the sites. And so over 19 million people have access to our service now. Last school year, we saved schools and families over 400,000 hours in care coordination efforts. And as a reminder of the different ways that people can access our service, we have the warm handoff through the CareLoop dashboard, where your mental health staff and your administrators are able to refer families to us and get updates on those cases. We have CareMatch, which got a facelift in the spring, and that's where people can search on their own to anonymously and confidentially get matched up with providers. And then we have our CareCompanions in the center of it all that are picking up the phone and calling providers on behalf of your staff and on behalf of your families to wait on hold, check availability, navigate insurance, make sure that providers specialize in the specific needs of the family, do all that vetting for you, help to schedule the appointment, and follow up afterwards to make sure that it is a good fit. And they're available 24/7 in over 200 languages. Let's touch on the data really quick. So last year was our first full school year, being able to look at the utilization. And we received 753 cases last school year. It took almost 34,000 communications to coordinate care on those cases. So that's inbound and outbound phone calls, emails, text messages, video chat, that our team is making and receiving on behalf of the community in order to coordinate care for those 753 cases. Those communications equated to 1,013 hours in care coordination, and we were able to confirm 388 appointments last school year, which is phenomenal. And then on top of that, we had 273 times that people completed the anonymous search and got matched up with providers on their own as well. Now, one of the requests that we got was kind of a bar graph to compare year over year. So this is last year, and this kind of shows the totals of all the interactions that we had. So the purple at the top is the inbound interactions, the blue, which is the majority, is going to be the outbound communications. And then we see the bars at the bottom are a little bit smaller, but you can see the numbers here on the side, and I'll show the KPIs here in a second as well. So 581 warm handoffs, 183 family-initiated cases, which were those self-referred cases. And then we had the 387 confirmed appointments, I think that turned into 388 actually, and then the 275 anonymous searches on top of that. And then to compare it to the year prior, which again was not a full school year, we started in March of 2021. So we really had two full months of utilization before starting the summer break, but you can kind of see the comparison was pretty similar in those two months. We got off to a really strong start in April and May of 2021. So again, you can see those inbound interactions and communications saved, the warm handoffs, there were 114 warm handoffs, and 106 family-initiated cases. So really, really got off to a strong start in the beginning of the partnership. A lot of those interactions were coming from the anonymous searches as well. And so to dive into the KPIs and take a look at that, again, the breakdown of the communications, the warm handoffs. Something that we added this past year to provide a little bit more transparency as to what happens to the cases that do not get appointed are these two categories here. So the unreachable families and the declined services. One of the most common challenges that we face is just getting a hold of families, and so that's where these unreachable cases come into play. And so our goal for this year is to really try to bring that down as much as possible. We updated our outreach process to extend that a little bit, to give families a little bit more time to get back to us. We understand that they're busy, they've got a lot going on, so we're hoping that that helps. And then we also put together some expectation-setting content for staff that is available through the CareLoop dashboard that we think will help a lot with bringing that number down and bringing the appointments up as well. And then, again, just to compare apples to apples from the previous school year, this is looking at, again, those first couple of months that we started the partnership in 2021. But there were some interesting data points that we were able to pull that I really was excited to share with you all tonight. So we had the 51% appointment rate last school year, which is a 6% increase from the previous board update that we provided. Again, the national average, when someone is given a list of resources, is an 18% chance that they confirm an appointment. We're typically shooting for 40% to 50%, so to be above that, we're really, really happy about. On average, it's taken about five days to get families matched up to services, and about four weeks to get them in the door to that first appointment. And one of the questions I think that President Ochoa asked was, what percentage of these cases are high needs, and what does the data look like for those cases? So we were able to get that for you. 31% of the total cases were identified as high severity, which means that it was either a more intensive pathway of services outside of just regular therapy, or they had specifically identified suicidal ideation, or some type of harm to themselves or others. And so with those cases, we had a 68% appointment rate, which is phenomenal. We cut the time to match in half to two and a quarter days, and the, cut the first appointment down by five days as well, getting that to 23.6 on average, which was really good to see as well. An update on providers that we have available in our database in your area, 741 providers within a 25-mile radius of the district, 213 of which are providing telehealth services. And then, in regards to telehealth, because you can tap into resources across the entire state, there are over 6,000 providers in the state of Texas that we have in our database that can provide telehealth services out of the 22,000 total providers in the state. On top of that, we are measuring satisfaction with care in regards to when families go to that first appointment. We're sending out surveys to check in if they're happy with that provider, if they feel like it's a good fit. That bumped up 4% from our last update as well to 88% satisfaction with care, which was phenomenal. And we're receiving about a 76% response rate on those surveys that are getting sent out, which is actually very high. Breaking down the more qualitative data here, so the gender, age, and ethnicity, these all got updated in the impact report in the spring as well. So when the district administration is looking at this report, they can actually filter now by gender, age, ethnicity, and also the mental health needs. And so you can select on the adolescents, for example, if you want to just look at that age group and see if there's any significant trends or insights based on that age group compared to the aggregate data, which has been very, very helpful. And so this is kind of the totals for last school year, which looks pretty good and hopefully is an accurate representation of the district. But then you can see here, anxiety, depression, trauma, those are the most common reasons that folks are reaching out for help. Disrupted behavior following that, as long as marital, which includes couples counseling, family counseling, and then suicidal ideation and ADHD. Not as much utilization on the substance use side, and that is common, to not see as many people reach out for help in regards to substance abuse. But we are certainly able to help however we can in regards to disciplinary hearings, expulsionary hearings, or more preventative measures whenever those needs come up. And so we can certainly work on that this year with your staff as well. Breaking down insurance and providers, so a lot of families in the community reporting that they have Medicaid, ETNA, no insurance, or other carve-outs of Medicaid, El Paso First. And so those families are getting connected to these resources here. A lot of providers in your community that are stepping up and supporting your families that we're able to connect them with, which is fantastic to see. You have private practices, local programs and clinics, and of course, your larger institutions as well. Maintaining a really high net promoter score of 92, which is just fantastic. We've continued to receive more and more surveys. We've now received 63 responses, have not had any detractors, so no one has given us a 6 or below on the rating of a 0 to 10. Everyone has been a 9 or a 10, which is the promoter, and then 7 or an 8 is considered a passive. Couple of friendly reminders on best ways to maximize the partnership is the promotion, letting folks know that the service is available. We've updated all of our letters, our flyers, our communications in the Resource Center, so that all got a facelift over the summer and updated that information, added some additional content as well. We will continue to send out the surveys throughout the year to make sure we're gathering feedback and making updates and improvements based on that feedback. We're sending out newsletters to everyone that registers for the dashboard. So again, all your counselors, psychologists, social workers, nurses, liaisons, principals, they're getting a monthly newsletter with updates from us. And then we're also always encouraging folks to reach out to us directly or go to the Help Center if they need any information. And we're always available to support however we can. That's my presentation, and I'll go ahead and pause and open it up for questions.
Sure.
Yes, thank you very much for that presentation. I think this is very much needed service for our community members and our students. You mentioned about being sure that students, parents, community members are aware about this. You mentioned flyers. Is there other efforts or communication that's happening to make sure that everybody is aware that these services are available?
Yeah, absolutely. So we've been working closely with your team, and every month we're updating content based on whatever's going on in that month. We have a lot of back-to-school content that's available in both English and Spanish that can be included in social media posts, in newsletters to families, included on district and school websites. And so any of those different platforms that we're creating content to be available to share. And all of it has this CareMatch link on it, this QR code goes directly to Isleta's CareMatch link, where people can search on their own and do those anonymous searches. So yeah, various different platforms that we're creating content for and putting together templates with translations as well.
But how are they finding these, this content? I'm curious, do our teachers take the time to, at ever, at any point, talk to students about having this available to them? Because, I mean, it's great to have, you know, content and flyers and stuff, but if they don't really know that, that this even exists, I mean, if it's not being told to them, I think there's probably a lot of students and other community members who would need it but don't even know that it's available.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez, Dr. Latorre, President Ochoa. The teachers are fully aware. We send out regular reminders. They get emails through our district email account reminding them of CARESOLIS. On top of that, our school counselors meet with each individual class during their PLC times and other times during the day to talk to the classes, as well as communicate with parents in the event there is a need.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, I just want to be sure that we're encouraging these type of communications and taking at least a few minutes out of classroom time. I would suggest, just to remind students that this is available, and if that's being done, that's fantastic.
I agree, and I think we also will repeatedly send it out through Peachjar as well, just to make sure our parents don't forget it's available.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
My pleasure.
We have some additional information from the head counselor for the school district.
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, and Dr. De La Torre. So to answer your question, we've done, since we launched in 2122, sir, we've done several trainings throughout the district. We've worked and collaborated with our athletics department to train our athletic coordinators on how we can promote this care coordination service. We train our counselors yearly, so since we launched in 2122, every year we've been doing, this will be our second year that we do a refresher training with our district counselors, and going through the dashboard on how to monitor the kids and how they're getting connected to care. And we've also collaborated with our special ed department to train our school psychologists. We've trained our communities and school coordinators, and we've also worked with Ms. Belmonte, who oversees our district nurses, to train our nurses as well. And so that's part of our yearly training. The other thing that we've been doing is we've been working closely with our PR department on how we can continue promoting this via social media. Dr. De La Torre has been a great supporter and has done a few videos on getting the word out. And so we are using, definitely using the resources within the Resource Center on how to continue to get the word out.
Well, that's fantastic. Thank you so much for sharing that. I'm very happy to hear that. And I just want to be sure we are fostering an environment where we are promoting this and communicating it well with our students. And it sounds like we are doing that. So thank you for being clear about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chaminis, would you be able to bring up that QR code that you had?
Yes, sir.
And to follow up on Mr. Hernandez's comments, is it something that we could put on the back of the student IDs? I think it would obviously be an easy place for students to have access to it, but it would also prompt questions from parents to say, what is that QR code and was it a go-to?
Yeah, 100%. We love that. But yeah, your team's been fantastic. But yeah, your, your team's been fantastic. We already have a couple of meetings on the calendar, like was mentioned. So that, that QR code is available to all stakeholders of the district. And if you were able to put it on the, on the student ID cards, that would be phenomenal.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We can absolutely do that. Phenomenal.
Thank you for this information. What happens in the case of, or what, in the case that a family doesn't have insurance? Where, I know they're referred out for services and stuff, but what happens in the cases when they, there is no insurance or it's a child calling anonymously and, or an eighteen-year-old that's still in high school and they don't have insurance? What happens in those cases?
Yeah, great, great question. We certainly do not want that to be a barrier for any family, any student. So if a family does not have insurance, we connect them to sliding scale out-of-pocket options that adjust based on income. And if we need to look for free options, depending on the family's budget, we can certainly do that as well and find free options depending on whatever's available in the community. But we would definitely help point them in the right direction and get them connected to an appropriate resource.
I think that's another piece that's important as we're doing the marketing, because the reality is there's many people that don't access mental health care because of lack of insurance. So I would recommend that as we move forward.
Thank you very much. I just want to let the board know and everybody know that I personally had to use your services for one of my family members. And let me say first that I was always on the fence, whether, yeah, this is great or not great and everything else. But having gone through this process, once, uh, once we called in, the, they found us a provider within days. And, and just the communications that was, that I felt that this person on the other end really cared. They really cared to provide us the best care possible. They gave us the options. I must admit, the first option wasn't that great. And we complained to, to the, that person, and they found another provider, which has been excellent, and it's local. And because of that, I have now fully support this service that we provide for. And it takes something like that to convince you. You know, you always hear stuff and you know, yeah, yeah. But once it happens to you and you have to experience it and you see how good a program this is, or, or, you know. I just want to say thank you. If you ever send me a questionnaire, I surely would give you high marks for that, because like I said, it takes something like this to bring you down to earth and realize that not everything is perfect. And, but there are, there are ways to help whatever it is that you encounter.
Thank you so much for sharing that. Means the world. You know, it's, it's easy to, it sounds great in theory, but you're a hundred percent right. You know, like you don't really know the impact until you're there and, and you're dealing with it yourself. And yeah, that, that means so much to me that you shared that, and I really do appreciate it.
Okay, well, if there's other questions, I think we want to thank you and go back to what you were doing.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great evening.
And then our final report, the board's internal auditor, Ms. Amy Sanchez, is going to give us her monthly update.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening all.
That was a great idea. A little step stool.
Trying to navigate this. Good evening. I wanted to give you a brief update. Looks like we'll be presenting approximately quarterly. First, an administrative update. We're happy to report that all of our auditor positions are now filled. Our Auditor Two vacancy was filled by Rod Chavez, who was our former Auditor One. That created a vacancy, which has now been filled by Norma Minor, who was our former Clerk Four. We have one more vacancy before we're fully staffed, and that's for Secretary Three. We'll be having interviews next week. An overview of our audit projects from the prior year pending projects. We have one still pending and one completed. We completed the ALPS, the Academic Languages Programs. And our pending is professional services contract. That's a lower priority right now, because not many, there, there haven't been any significant issues. And we've focused more on our 2023 audit plan, which we've developed ourselves. And as you can see, we're well underway. These, the update here is since our last presentation to you, which was in April. So we have completed eleven campus audits. We have one non-campus audit that was complete. That's the year-end inventory that we did alongside the external auditors. We've got eight campus audits currently in progress and two non-campus. That would be an audit on child nutrition and the other one on the superintendent and board expenses. As our internal audit standards require, we do follow up, and we currently are following up. Next quarter, we hope to share with you a full matrix of all the findings and recommendations we've issued and the status of each, including their implementation date and whether or not they've actually been implemented or still in progress. Our next slide shows an overview. Well, this is actually our, our full audit plan that, that we've been working on this year. And you can see the, the status of each project. On the left are our campus audits. We have done a good job. We have made good progress there. In order to complete that by the end of the year, we have seven elementary schools and two high schools to start and finish by the end of the year. I think we'll be pretty close to completing that side. Now, the right side is our non-campus and carryovers. As you can see, there's some blanks there. We will focus the next few months on starting some of those non-campus audits. We've got child nutrition services underway. And as I mentioned earlier, we're already underway of our review of the superintendent and board expenditures. Our other activities, we do have the Fraud Abuse and Waste Hotline. We do receive calls to it. We receive calls to the hotline as well as just to our direct lines. Since January, we've received twelve calls or requests. Two of those were audit-related. One was unsubstantiated, and one actually resulted in an audit report, which was included in your packages. Three calls were not audit-related and were forwarded to the, to the departments. For example, there was a concern about FMLA, a concern about information security, phishing email, and as well as an unsubstantiated claim of a lack of supplies at, at a school. But those were all forwarded to the, to the relevant departments. The remainder of the calls, as is not unusual for, for a hotline, were personnel-related. All of these are forwarded to Human Resources, and we periodically check in with them on the status. And all of them were investigated and either action was taken or they were unsubstantiated. This is an overall update for the quarter. This is actually year-to-date. I would like to update you that second numerical column there, revised budget. We had to revise our original budget. Our original budget was under the assumption that we were going to add a whole new person earlier in the year. We have not added a whole new auditor until more recently. So we adjusted the hours a little further down. There are available hours that we've saved on follow-up as well as on the hotline. So I think we're still going to be okay for the end of the year. We may have a project, a non-campus one, that we might have to carry forward. But I, I think we're doing, we've made good progress. And that completes my presentation. Unless you have any questions or need additional information. Yes, ma'am?
I want to say, Amy, thank you, Sanchez, for, for the information that is provided to us monthly. It's, it's for me, definitely not as, as keen as, as Mr. Ochoa here when it comes to audits, but they're very user-friendly to understand. And I, I like that I, that you can see what, what, what's going on, what, what was taking place and what actions are being taken in a brief synopsis, so that we understand, okay, it's, it's not just sitting somewhere. So I appreciate the, the reporting style that's been coming out.
Absolutely.
Amy, you've been here for over a year now?
In this position?
Yes.
Since February-ish?
In your time here, one of the things that was always a little concerned, concerning was the change of administration for these schools and how long the audits would take to perform then after they had changed or moved. Has there been any improvement on the, on how, how fast these are now conducted?
So because we are doing the campus audits on a more cyclical basis, we're trying to audit every campus at least every couple of years. It does not necessitate an audit done at only the exit of, of a principal. However, for those campuses that have closed, when a campus is closing, we do go in and do an audit since it, since it's no longer going to exist and we can close out their activities. We can evaluate, make sure everything was done appropriately.
So we don't do audits on principals exiting the schools anymore?
If it's requested, but not only. There were some campuses where principals would stay for quite a long time, and those campuses weren't reviewed. And we prefer this method, because we're going to the campuses a little more frequently.
So the risk is, in your perception, is low?
Yes.
For those? That's why it's not a high priority?
I'm not sure if I...
Yeah, if, if a principal leaves a campus, for whatever reason, they go to another district or whatever. And of course, the school has a responsibility to, to provide you the information when you audit them. But that principal has already left long and gone. If there are any discrepancies in that, how do we address that?
Since we're evaluating them with more frequency, it won't have been too long since their last audit when they leave. Does that make sense?
So because of the frequency that you're conducting these audits, it's, it's lowering the potential for any discrepancy to be surfaced during that periods of time?
Yes.
So the risk is low?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, I mean, that's fine. Thank you. Any other question?
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to go to public hearing. Per Texas Education Code four-four dot zero-zero-four and Board Policy CE Legal, the Board of Trustees must hold a public hearing to discuss and set the district's tax rate on an annual basis. The notice of the public hearing to discuss the 2023-2024 tax rate was previously published in the El Paso Times. The Board of Trustees appreciates your attendance and welcomes your input during the public hearing. Please observe the following rules. Individual, individuals wishing to speak are limited to three minutes. After the presentation, we will take public comment on the district's tax rate. Dr. De La Torre, do you have a presentation on the district's tax rate?
Yes, President Ochoa. Our financial and operational officer, Mrs. Lindley Leeper, will lead the district's tax rate presentation.
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, and Dr. De La Torre. This evening, I have a presentation to open the public hearing, as Dr. De La Torre mentioned. I hope to be able to answer many of your questions about what is the tax rate? What is a tax levy? What's the no new revenue rate? How does it apply to our constituents? And so if you'll indulge me, I'll try to get all the way to the end and then take your questions. And hopefully by then, I've answered most, if not all, of your questions and your constituents. So on this very first slide, I want to focus your attention on the area that says proposed 2023 tax rate. In that particular section, I am comparing the impact if you had a home with exactly the same value located in the El Paso Independent School District, the Socorro Independent School District, or Isleta ISD. And so on the very first row, you can see that I've set a constant home value. Now, that doesn't mean that all of the homes in those areas are valued the same. In fact, what I'm doing is using my average single-family dwelling value of a hundred and seventy-six thousand, which is at the bottom, the last row, and I'm setting it close to a hundred, I'm setting it at seven, a hundred and seventy-five, because that's close to our average home dwelling. The very first thing you can see, and as you all well know, is that we deduct a local optional homestead exemption of twenty percent. So the very first thing we do is reduce the taxable value for any homeowner in Isleta ISD by twenty percent of the value. So from one-seventy-five minus thirty-five thousand, we now have a taxable value of one-hundred-and-forty thousand, compared to Socoros and EPISDs, which remain the same, because they don't have a local optional homestead exemption. From there, the state has now raised the standard exemption from forty thousand to one-hundred thousand. I will caution you that this has to go to the voters in November, but I can't imagine a single voter voting to deny themselves a hundred-thousand-dollar homestead exemption. So we all get the benefit of that particular standard exemption set by the state. So now Isleta homeowners have a reduced value of forty thousand, right? A hundred and forty less the hundred thousand standard exemption brings the taxable, excuse me, taxable value down to forty thousand, compared to a seventy-five-thousand-dollar home in EPISD or Socorro. Is everybody with me through there? Okay, you hear this a lot, and I want to just, we'll say it right out in the open. Yes, we have the highest tax rate. We're at a dollar twenty-eight per mil, which means it's at one-point-two-eight divided by a hundred. EPISD has just adopted a rate, or is planning to, I believe they've already done it, of a dollar thirteen-seventy-one per mil, and Socorro has almost a dollar twenty-five compared to our dollar twenty-eight. However, the big thing is not what's the rate, not what's the value, but what is the check you're going to write at the, in January, by January thirty-first to the consolidated, consolidated taxing entity? And you can see that for an Isleta ISD homeowner who has a home valued the same as EPISD or Socorro, the tax bill is five-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. The tax bill is the same thing as the tax levy. And so, yes, they can tout all day long that we have the highest rate, but dollar for dollar, a home in our district with a local optional homestead exemption and the standard exemption has a bill that's four-hundred-twenty-five dollars less than a home of the same value in Socorro and three-hundred-forty dollars less than a home in EPISD. Good on that slide? Yes? Okay, let me go to the next one. So on this one, I've done, I've tweaked it just a little bit. We're actually looking at the city of El Paso now, along with Socorro, EPISD, and Isleta. And we're looking at the actual median home value for each of those entities. So you can see that a home in EPISD, the average value is two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, Socorro's two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, city of El Paso, two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, compared to an Isleta average home value of one-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand. Again, I removed the local optional homestead exemption, so we reduced our value by thirty-five thousand, two-hundred-six dollars, bringing our taxable value before the state's exemption down to a hundred-and-forty thousand, compared to two-fourteen in the city, two-twenty-six in Socorro, and two-nineteen in EPISD. You'll notice on the next line, the standard exemption offered by the city, and I love the city, worked there for many years, but I get really tired of them saying we have the highest tax rate. We have the best... the highest tax rate, we have the best exemptions there are. So their standard exemption is $5,000 on a homestead compared to $100,000 for each of the school districts. So now we have further reduced our taxable value on an Isleta home to $40,000. For the city, it's still at $209,000, for Socorro at $126,000, and for EPISD, $119,000. You apply the tax rate, and you can see that again, a homeowner in Isleta with an average-valued home will pay $523, which is $1,241 less than that home is taxed by the city. It's $1,583 less than what a Socorro homeowner pays, and $837 less than what an EPISD homeowner pays. The last three rows, I'm bringing to your attention because you've heard that we are having a tax rate increase. But if you're familiar with our tax rate, last year's tax rate was 1.4589. The proposed tax rate is 1.2813. You have to wonder how in the world is it possible that I'm having a tax rate increase? Well, regardless of what my rate is, values fluctuate, and values go up. And so for us, this particular year, our adjusted property tax value as of July 25th is $7.1 billion, which is interesting because compared to the next row, last year's property tax value that I can tax on is $5.6 billion. How in the world did we go up that much this year? Well, this is an interesting concept, and I think maybe the easiest way for me to explain it is, if you look at an organization like Isleta ISD, on any given moment, at any given day, at a moment's notice, we can be hiring somebody and somebody can be retiring. So positions like property values change all day long, over and over, every day. So on July 25th, the law requires that CAD certify a value. They have to give me something to base our revenue and tax rate on. But daily, people are fighting those, they're going to the appraisal review board, they're adding a new pool to their home, and so their value increases. All of these changes occur every day throughout the year. And so between, and I had this question recently, so I really wanted to point it out to you tonight, the certified value that CAD provided last year at this same time was $7.3 billion. But if you look at what they gave me now, it's 5.6. That $1.7 billion difference is new homestead exemptions filed since last year's certified value. So that's a big deal because we wondered, do people know about our local optional? Do they know about how to declare their home as a homestead and get the benefit of the standard exemption? I would argue that by $1.7 billion in additional homestead exemptions, they are aware. And so I wanted you to see this and to recognize that that $7.1 they're telling me is my certified taxable value today is going to change. I'm not going to bank on that revenue because it's going to fluctuate as we go through the year and people continue to contest these increased appraised values. Okay? All right. Now, what's the no new revenue rate? If you're familiar with city council, you may recall they used to call it the effective rate. And the effective rate and no new revenue rate, the no new revenue is a term that came about, I believe, in the legislative session 2020. They were trying to demonstrate that fluctuating property values impact what your rate would be. And so they wanted us to describe to you, if a, and I'm going to start with 2022, if I had a taxable property valued at $100,000 in 2022, and the tax rate was set at $1, I got $1,000 in revenue, right? Okay, now in 2023, if the value of the home goes up by double, what's the rate I have to charge to get the same amount of revenue? So you're backing into the tax rate, and it would have been 50 cents. So the no new revenue rate, according to this illustration, would have been 50 cents. And when we talk about it in our budget hearings and in our other publications that we have to put out in the newspaper, this is what they're looking for. What would the rate be today if you only got last year's revenue? And so $1.28 is actually more than the no new revenue rate, and it means that if those values hold steady and they don't get reduced by appraisal, review board, or other disputes, then we could expect to collect $6 million more in property tax revenue. Now, keep in mind, even if I collect that, it's not all going to operations because a third, more than a third of our rate, goes to take care of debt, right? And all of our debt is voter-approved. So there's nothing we're assessing in that INS or interest and sinking fund rate that has not been voter-approved. Okay, one more slide. Let me talk you through the components of the rate. So the maintenance and operation, or M&amp;O, rate is what we use to fund salaries, to fund utilities, to fund all of the daily activities of the district. You can see that that M&amp;O rate has declined every year since '21. The interest and sinking fund rate has also declined every year since 2021. In fact, out of the last seven years, we have reduced our tax rate for five out of the seven. That's a big deal, and I will argue there's not probably anybody else in the county of El Paso that's done that. So you can see the total rate in 2021 was $1.527 compared to $1.4589, almost a seven-cent reduction last year, and almost an 18-cent reduction this year to 1.2813. I've also been asked recently, what is our outstanding debt and how much do we pay per year in debt service? So in 2021, we paid $50 million, almost $51 million, $50.8 million in debt service. So that's just my, if you will, my credit card payment, right? In 2022, it declined to $48.6 million, and this year it will be 50.6. That's largely due to the fact that we finally issued all of our debt and all of our payments have kicked in. The total bonded indebtedness for the district in 2021 was $900.5 million. In 2022, we paid it down by $26.9 million to $873.6, and we paid it down further this year by $13.9 million to leave us with an outstanding debt of $859 million. Interestingly, Mr. Ochoa asked me earlier, how much of that $859 million is attributable to the 2015 and 2019 voter-approved bonds? Only 34%, or 36%. The rest of it is outstanding debt from 2001, 2004, and many years before our time. So that actually concludes my presentation, and I welcome any questions you might have. Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. Okay. I'm sorry. He says slide one. I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry. It says slide three here and slide two there, so my bad. Is that better?
What was the amount? I want to be sure I'm reading this chart right. What was the, based on your, that might be slide one, actually, based on the example you gave of, I think it was $175,000 in every district? Is the $1,284 that was paid last year, is that the actual? What would have been the dollar amount in the example that you gave?
Yes. So last year, using the average home value at $160,000, our taxpayer would have paid $1,284. And the difference is, the standard exemption last year was $40,000 compared to a standard exemption this year of $100,000. So $1,284 last year compared to $513 this year. That standard exemption by the state is a huge factor.
Okay, so that same taxpayer is saving about $700 this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lindley?
Yes, sir.
Standard exemption, the $100,000, is it, if a person is over 65 years old and owns a home, does the exemption go up to $110,000?
So this is my understanding, and I went through it with CAD, and finally, this is the way it works. At 65, your levy, your bill, is frozen. The only things that impacted are positively, so it will bring your levy, your bill down, are increases in the standard exemption, increases in any other exemption, a decrease in the tax rate. Those things can improve your tax bill, right? It'll come down. If you build something, that's the only way your levy can increase. So whatever your bill was when you turned 65, your bill is frozen at that rate. It can come down only for those circumstances, or if you decided to add a swimming pool or something else in the back.
I just have something to say because I think that this is one of the hardest things to get across to our constituency.
Yes, ma'am.
Because they operate, they see numbers like that are, the $128 is more expensive than here and here and here. And I think that it's really, really hard for them to understand all of this other stuff, although I do like it that you have proof now that they're getting the message about applying for that.
Homestead exemption. Yes, ma'am.
So that does seem to be getting out there. I kind of think we still need to push on that because I think the problem is that people, they get up in arms. They see their tax bill, they don't think about, they don't think about all the things that have gone along with that, you know, how that the exemption is there, all these different things. All they think about is, oh, my gosh, it's gotten higher or whatever. And so I still think that we need to, I don't know, some way or another, we need to put out information to make sure people understand exactly what we are offering and what we're providing. Even though I think we're doing a good job, I think we still need to keep at that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I have to say, Dr. De La Torre went with me to a community meeting. He did a really good job explaining to the people.
He's awesome.
Yeah, which was good because then they did start saying, well, how do we influence the CAD? And there's really not an answer for that.
No, ma'am. They're independent.
So it is important, though, that they understand that it's not just the school district, it's not just the city. The CAD has a huge part in this, too, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Lindley, will we, I didn't see it in the board backup, but will we get a copy of this presentation?
Yes, ma'am. And last year, we did this, Mrs. Bobby's PR group does a phenomenal job of creating this chart, we publish it on the website, we'll give you the presentation, and then I think we even did a postcard or something last year.
We did.
I think we continue that, not we're raising your taxes, but we are ensuring that we are responsibly using taxpayer funds, and we're keeping in line with the state, and we're able to really lower the taxes. That's an amazing exemption that the state has now offered. How, when you look at taxes as a homeowner, not just, of course, as a board member at the district, how will that work across the board for homeowners, for city taxes, for, is this just for school district?
It has no impact on city taxes. That standard exemption, let me go to the next slide, that $5,000 is the $5,000.
That's important for a constituency to know and understand as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I know we talked about this before, but I think we need to get it across to our community as well as us because we're taxpayers as well, that the bottom line is the property tax amount that I will receive for my taxes at the end of the year. Even though the, you know, the city of El Paso and everybody else, the county and everybody else that taxes us are going to tax us on the valued home that Central Appraisal has placed on our value of our home, right? So the tax levy is going to increase when I get my tax bill from those other entities.
From the other entities, yes. So you still will pay for the hospital district, the county, the city. And so when you get that bill, it's very hard to distinguish that Isleta's is much, much less because everybody else has an impact, too.
But we have no control over that. And what's going to happen is that they're going to see a tax increase, some of them, and they're going to say, well, everybody. But Isleta right here is at, on $176,000 average value for Isleta home is $523. Now, I think they need to understand that the state has $100,000 exemption. How does that affect our income as provided to Isleta from the state?
So we've talked about that in the past. As I mentioned earlier, our $1.28 is slightly higher than the no new revenue rate. The reason for that is, if I reduce that rate further, the state is not going to give me as high a matching contribution. And so we start losing revenue when we go below what the state says your rate should be. Now, they established that $100,000, and they effectively hold us harmless. We get paid per student ADA, right? So no matter what it is, no matter what they do locally, they're going to make it up on the other side. But they require that I place a certain burden on the local homeowner so that they are involved and engaged in the education of their children if they're going to match us at the maximum amount. So the tax rate we're recommending maximizes the state contribution.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Secretary de Lucero, is there anyone who has signed up to speak on the tax rate?
No, sir. President Ochoa, there are no public comments at this point.
Okay, thank you. We will now close the public hearing. We will proceed with the agenda. We will now discuss agenda items as listed in the posted notice of the regular meeting of the said ISD Board of Trustees for August 23, 2023, and related recommended motions with the superintendent and executive cabinet, and receive responses to questions and/or requests for additional information to the superintendent in preparation for deliberation and action on said items at the August 2023 regular Board of Trustees meeting. Please stop me if you have any questions or wish to pull an item. Consent item number one is the minutes of the Board of Trustees Canvas Election Workshop Regular and PFC Meeting, January 19, 2023, 6:00 p.m. Consent item number two, Board of Trustees Special Meeting, June 28, 2023, 6:00 p.m. Consent item number three is the monthly financials update for May and June 2023. Consent item number four is the budget amendments requiring board approval. Consent item number five is donation to the Fine Arts Department. Consent item number six is donation to Ramona Elementary School.
President Ochoa?
Yes, sir.
Can I acknowledge it right here, or you want to?
You want to pull this item?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, let's pull it.
Okay, we're going to pull consent item number six.
Thank you.
Okay, so noted. Consent item number seven, staff development minutes waiver application to the Texas Education Agency for all Isleta ISD campuses for professional development. Moving on to the action items, support for minor boundary modifications of the foreign trade zone, number 68.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes.
I have to say that I was a little confused by all of this. Can we find out exactly what this, what is this talking about here? I know, it sounds kind of...
We have somebody that's stepping up to explain it to us.
We have this.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. The Foreign Trade Zone 68 is a tool that allows businesses to expand and grow and create jobs. And so the Foreign Trade Zone consists of virtual boundaries, and so it's been about 18 years since the last expansion. And what we want to do is expand the boundaries of these foreign trade zone boundaries around new industrial parks. Current industrial parks are growing larger. We want to be able to put these boundaries around those industrial parks because what it does, it helps to create jobs, it helps companies save a lot of money on customs duties and fees, and in doing so, it helps them to put more money back into their business. And so what we're looking for now is we're preparing an application... an application to the Department of Commerce to expand these boundaries. And so we're asking the Isleta Independent School District for a letter of support for bringing these new properties into the Foreign Trade Zone boundaries. And this does not affect the tax base in any way. What it does is create, you know, in creating more jobs, it actually creates a bigger tax base for Isleta. And I have, let me see, I guess I can. It's not a touchscreen. Use the mouse. Okay. So what we're doing is we're reorganizing and expanding the current boundaries. And so what we'll end up with in the Isleta Independent School District boundaries will be four magnet sites to cover industrial parks. We'll incorporate three single usage sites. So these are sites we've brought in in the past through minor boundary modifications where we've come to even gotten permission for that. And we'll incorporate these into those four magnet sites. And we'll maintain two single user sites. So a single user site is around one facility. A magnet site is an industrial park. So we'll end up with four industrial parks and two single users. And so we're asking today for a letter of support for that. I'd like to show you what does that mean. So when you look at the boundaries, our service area is El Paso County. And so we've gone to the Commissioner's Court and gotten permission from that in different school districts. You can see, highlighted in the blue are the sites that are in the Isleta School District. And we have a lot of active sites and we wish to expand that because that will bring in more companies. It'll let companies expand. And so you can see the Mission Valley is the one down there by the Isleta Bridge. You can see the central region is down by Hawkins. You can see Site 7, which is one of the sites that we'll be bringing into a magnet site. We brought them in back in 2015 as a standalone site. We're going to bring them in to a magnet site. Gamer is another one of those brokers. And Woodbridge are two sites that will be standalone. There'll be only two standalones left. Site 16 is Ola Logistics. We'll bring them into one of the magnet sites. Site 18 is Leitrevino area. It's been part of our Site 3, but it's kind of segregated off to the west. So we're going to make it a site by itself because we're getting a lot of companies starting up the program over there. And then Site 22 is one that is brand new and it's right down on Joe Battle and North Loop. It's a very close site down to the bridge. And I'll show you those real quick. Here, here's the explanation. These are the four sites that will be magnet sites. And I've listed the three single usage sites that will be incorporated into those four magnet sites. And then these will be the maintained two single user sites. So I have maps for all of these. So this is the Zaragoza Bridge area that you're seeing here. The red areas are what currently have boundaries. And there's a, there's a large expansion Riverside International that will add in the blue. And there's a lot of new buildings that will be going up over there. It's right off of Pan America Wind Road. It's right next to the Zaragoza Bridge. Site 4 is down off of Hawkins, near Phelps Dodge. That one already exists, so there'll be no change to that one. Site 18, this is the one where we're going to break it off of Site 3 and make it its own magnet site, the Leitrevino industrial area. And you can see some of the new, some of the darker red boxes are ones that we've brought in in the past few years. And we're getting more companies that want to start up. This is a lot of industrial area. So we want to make that a magnet site by itself. And then we go to Site 22, which is the new southeast industrial magnet site that we want to start up. Kimley Horn is the land developer. There's 238 acres. It's, it's just to the west of Socorro City Limits. And so this will be a very viable industrial park. It's very close to the bridge. It has very easy access to 375 and I-10. And so that is our expansion request to get a support letter for bringing these new sites, expanding the boundaries for the Foreign Trade Zone.
Thank you.
I had a quick question on Site number 5. Why is that one not considered part of Isleta ISD?
Site number 5 is, was set up many, many years ago, back in 1991. And it was determined back then that railroad was going to be a big industrial site. I actually used to work out there for Packard Electric General Motors. And Site number 5 is almost 95% residential housing. So we're going to pull that one out because you're not allowed to have residential housing in these boundaries or retail operations in the boundaries. You can't activate that. So because of that, Site 5 will pull it out because it's all residential.
There's, there's quite a bit of industrial on that street?
There's a lot of industrial on that street, but there's no one that wants to use the program out there. We don't see it as a viable moment right now, but it's very easy to bring in to another expansion into the future. We're already getting requests from More Development to do more expansion in the future. This is a large expansion because there hasn't been one in about 18 years.
So what are the benefits for taking it away?
So what's that?
What are the benefits for taking it away?
It's not used. It's not used. There's no, there's no possibility of it being used in the future for that particular boundary because it's all residential. You'd have to tear down all the houses in order to make that viable.
There aren't any houses on that side of railroad?
Site 5, it's pretty much, most of it is to the west. It's all to the west of Railroad Drive. Green, green.
Oh, way up.
Paper packaging is out there. It's the largest industrial park building out there. They're not in the zone.
The dark blue, but over on the other side where the light blue is?
What's that?
Over on the other side of the little number 5 where that light blue is?
Where that 5 is?
Right.
The, that blue area is to the west of Railroad Drive. It's all residential.
And the light blue to the east of that number 5?
None of that is in the zone. There's no boundaries there. Across the street from where that zone boundary currently exists, across that is desert. It's just a very short piece of desert and railroad tracks.
Right, where all the industrial buildings are at? So then why is that?
All the industrial is further down railroad, closer to 375.
It's right across the street from the, the dark blue?
Sir?
That industrial park is right across the street from the dark blue?
For number 5?
Yes, sir.
There's, there's, sir, there's no industrial park out there. There's, there are industrial buildings up and down railroad, but none of them are in the current boundaries of that number 5.
So then why is that light blue there?
We're talking about number 5, the blue blotch. It's.
Right, just to the east of number 5, there's a little light blue?
Oh, that's water. That's the Fred, that light blue is the Fred Hervey desalination plant. That's where the ponding areas used to be out there. So only the dark blue is what we're looking at.
So you're doing away with the dark blue? Does Green Bay Packaging take advantage of the?
The dark blue are current sites. And the red are expanded areas.
Are, are you doing away with the current site on number 5?
That current site, number 5, we will be removing it from this expansion during, in this expansion process because the boundaries surround residential houses.
And there's no industrial buildings making use of that? There's no companies like Green Bay Packaging that are using that?
Green Bay Packaging is not in those boundaries at all. And we've approached them in the past and they do not wish to use that, the FTZ program, because everything they buy is domestic. The Foreign Trade Zone program helps companies that bring in a lot of foreign materials and do manufacturing or move foreign materials through their facilities. And so they don't even qualify to use the program, Green Bay Packaging. So they're not in the boundaries currently and they don't want to use the program in order that they qualify.
And no other companies do either, Dow Tyler or any of those other ones?
None of the others do, no, sir.
Thank you.
I think I'm understanding now that that whole exchange gave a little bit more information. So basically, we won't have any issue by agreeing to this or supporting this that there'll be something such as a medical waste facility in, in any of the boundary for this type of expansion. Is that correct?
The only thing you could do in a foreign trade zone is what's legal in the United States or in El Paso or the county.
So if it's legal?
Yeah, but medical waste doesn't really qualify into a foreign trade zone because it's, it's material that's coming into being manufactured and materials coming out. Or it's just like a distribution. We have a lot of distribution centers using the program where a lot of materials coming in, going to Mexico, coming back from Mexico and going out all over the country. So to answer your question, I don't see that happening in a foreign trade zone. It just really wouldn't fit.
Okay.
Could you tell us about some of the companies that are looking to make use of these sites? What kind of companies are we looking at? If not medical waste facilities, then which type of companies?
So what we have is we have about 12 to 14 third-party logistics companies, companies like Pilot Freight, Gamer, Ola Logistics, K&amp;N Logistics.
What do they do?
They, they move material in and out of El Paso, in and out of the country. They're logistics companies. A lot of the, oops. Companies like Lear, Wrangler Jeans, Baxter Cardinal Health. They use it to do the distribution. There's a lot of manufacturing going on in wires. There's over 300 McIl doors. Most of those are Fortune 500 companies. And they're using the distribution centers here in El Paso to move product into Mexico and out of Mexico. And those types of facilities are a perfect, perfect fit for Foreign Trade Zone program.
Who determines the fit? Is it you all through the Foreign Trade Zone program?
We help with that decision. The company itself makes that determination based on how much are they paying in customs duties? How much are they paying a year in merchandise processing fees? How much are they paying a year in brokerage fees? And how much are they paying in? There's one other slipping in my mind. Harbor maintenance fee, thank you. My esteemed colleague, Arslan Bernard is here with me. So those four fees, they do the business model and they say, how much are we paying last year in these four fees? And some of these companies are paying like $4 or $5 million in those fees by coming into the Foreign Trade Zone. They're able to eliminate or reduce those fees. And with that kind of savings, you know, optimizing and improving their business, they want to stay here. They want to grow here. And because of our position of being here on the border, El Paso is growing tremendously. And everywhere you look, you see the industrial parks growing like mad.
And how much, how much does it add? What, what type of, how much are the people that are, these jobs that are creating? Are they affordable living wages jobs that we're talking about? In other words, are we bringing in people who are just doing jobs that aren't going to afford them to live? Or are we expanding this to create more? Like, what is the benefit to the community as a whole?
So the benefit to the community as a whole, right now, there's 700 jobs that are directly related, directly related to Foreign Trade Zone program.
And how much, what does that equate to?
It depends on what the position is. If you're bringing in a manager to run the Foreign Trade Zone program, you're going to be paying that person somewhere between $60,000 and $80,000 a year. If you're bringing in the clerical person that has to do that type of work, it's a higher level clerical position. So you're going to be paying that person anywhere between $15,000 and $25,000 an hour. You will add probably one or two forklift people. That's going to be about $14,000, $15,000 an hour.
Okay. I just want, I just, you, you did say it, but I'm still not completely convinced that in expanding this, how far are these, is this industry away from residential areas?
The industrial parks, some are near them. If you look at the one down, Site number 2, down by the Zaragoza Bridge, they're not near any of the residential areas. If you look at a lot of the site, 16, 18, 7, you're looking at, most of that is retail and industrial area over there off Leitrevino. If you're looking at the one, the new Site 22, it's all farmland around it. And so there's no residential there. And then if you look at, let me see, what's the other big one? Site, Site 4, it's over by Phelps Dodge. It's off Hawkins. It's all industrial down there. That's where Commerce Street is and Hawkins and industrial.
As long as we have the assurance we're not going to be supporting the industry of a medical waste facility, I don't have a problem with it. But if that's, because it is legal in the state of Texas.
That wouldn't fit the program. It just wouldn't fit the program, no.
Thank you.
So let me understand here. We're voting on the expansion of these sites, which are the ones that are red?
Yes.
These are the ones that are, I mean, they're all over the map, but the ones that directly impact Isleta.
Yes, sir.
We're not, they're not acquiring any property from Isleta or anything like that. It's just, it's kind of like we have, we're giving the, what is it?
They're just virtual boundaries?
Permission that you can expand it to these sites without any concern from us.
Right. We're asking for a support letter for the expansion because this will help the economy and Isleta.
Dr. Delatorre, who here at Isleta has conducted a study to see how this would impact any of our schools?
No one.
No one?
No.
Because they're not close to any of our schools?
No. By definition, there are zones that may be adjacent to residential areas. But for example, the Zone 1, which is a significant expansion.
That's the airport.
It appears to be located almost on Fort Bliss or on the land that is, I guess, east of where the new distribution center's at in Butterfield Golf Course?
100% of Site 1 is the airport.
So those are not even close?
So these are, these are facilities that are being built regardless of whether we expand the boundaries or not. All we're doing is bringing boundaries around them to make the land more valuable, to make the land more attractive for investors, to make the land more, so companies will be more attracted to locating in these industrial parks that are being built already regardless of the Foreign Trade Zone program.
We don't own any of that land that would make it more valuable?
No. That would be nice.
Shucks. Okay. All right. That's all my questions I had on that. No other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Would, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, okay.
I never did catch your name.
My name is David Panko. I'm the manager of the Foreign Trade Zone program.
For who?
For the city of El Paso.
Okay.
I'm in the aviation department and I've been doing this for six years. And before that, I have 35 years at General Motors.
Okay, thank you very much for showing up tonight. Action item number two is the order setting the tax rate for fiscal year 2023-24. Action item number three is the endorsement of candidate for Region 19, member of the 2023 Tasby Board of Directors.
Mr. Ochoa?
Go ahead.
I just have more or less just a comment because when I see these two women who have, are looking to get this position, I just have to say that they're both excellent candidates. Cynthia Nahada served recently, but she's also very. Cynthia Nahera served recently, but she's also very, she's had a lot of experience in this area. But Marlene Bullard is also very, very expensive and she has served for, she served for the West Texas Council, as did Ms. Nahera. So both of these ladies, I just have to say they're both really good candidates for this position.
Okay. So I guess we'll wait till we come to it so we can
Yeah.
cast, nominate and cast her vote.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments on this? All right. Number four, request to the Texas Education Agency for class size waivers. Action item number five, school district teaching permit for Chinese teacher at Edgemere International School. Action item number six is approval of a teacher certification waiver for a Chinese teacher. And I gather it's the same one? No? It's two different ones? Ah, okay. Oh, I see the names now. Okay. Number seven is resolution regarding the office of the governor's FY 2023 Bullet Resistance Shield Grant Program. Action item number eight is approve declaration of certain school properties as surplus and authorization to offer for sale. Action item number nine is phase number six, solicitation number 222004, RFP BP-1910, Rio Bravo Middle School, Parkland High School, and Isleta High School upgrades and renovations. And action item number 10 is approval of board designated non-business days for calendar year 2023 and 2024 for the purpose of responding to public information requests under the Public Information Act and approval of respective calendars. Okay. Before we go on to, let's see. We have a consent item that was pulled. That was consent item number?
Item number six, sir.
Number six. Okay. Let me find it. Oh, there it is. Okay. Charlie, did you want to make some comments on this?
Yes, I wanted to, I just wanted to thank, I wanted to thank the Garcia family in honor of Hector Garcia. This donation was to support Ms. Nahero's kindergarten reading program and the school's library. Thank you so much for your donation. I know they're going to enjoy the amenities that come out of that money. So I just want to thank the Garcia family and thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes. Wait, do I recommend, oh, I accept, accepted donation? Oh, I move to accept the donation valued at $5,700 to benefit Ramona Elementary School.
May I have a second?
Second.
There's a second.
He seconded, but my, my.
Yeah. So you were the second.
I tried to.
Can we take a?
I got to move it.
Can we take a verbal vote? Mr. Safi? Can we take a verbal vote on this?
You have a motion and second on the floor to approve the pulled consent agenda item.
We did that already.
You already took the vote? I don't think you voted yet.
Okay.
I think what he's asking though is can we do this orally since we've already had the?
Yes, as long as the, as long as it's clear who's voting and which way.
So what is, that you want us to vote? I don't, we already moved it to the consent, the consent item?
President Ochoa, we have reset the, the board. So you can go ahead and move and second. There you go.
There you go. And then you can.
Oh, my mouse is.
Agenda, twice. Hit it one more time.
Okay.
The virtual stuff helped.
Yes, yes.
There you go.
Okay, the votes have been cast. And the results are seven approved and no, zero noes.
Thank you.
All right. Moving back. Yeah, we're moving back to the consent items. The order agenda has been approved on the remaining consent items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration. May I have a motion? Ms. Woodrow?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the remaining consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration.
We have a second by Mr. Hagerty. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. The results are seven in favor and none opposed. Moving on to the action items. Action item number one, support for the minor boundary modifications of trade zone, numbers foreign trade zone, number 68. Is there any discussion? No further discussion. May I have an electronic motion? Mr. Bustillos?
Mr. President, recommend, recommendation authorize the board, president, to authorize a board president to sign the letter in supporting the expansion of the foreign trade zone, number 68 in El Paso, in the El Paso region.
We have a second by Ms. Woodrow. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, none opposed. Action item number two, order setting tax rate for fiscal year 2023-24. Is there any discussion? No further discussion. May I have a motion? We have a, Mr. Bustillos?
Mr. President, I move to approve that 2023, 2024 property tax be increased by the adoption of the tax rate as set forth in the attached order and including separate components for the maintenance and operations of 82 cents, 60, 0.8263 in the depth services of 0.4550 for the total of 1.2813 per hundred of valuation, which is effectively a 7.33% increase in the tax rate.
We have a second by Mr. Hagerty. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, none opposed. Okay, we have action item number three, endorsement of candidate for Region 19, member 2023 Tasby Board of Directors. Is there any discussion?
I would like to nominate Mrs. Marlene Bullard for this position for our endorsement. I believe that we need to also support our rural school districts and she brings the rural voice as well as the urban voice. That would be, I don't know if I would need to make a motion or if we want to discuss that.
Was that a motion?
I haven't made a motion unless anybody wants to discuss it first. If not, I can make a motion.
Like I said, I think both candidates are top candidates and I don't think we can go wrong on either one of them. They've all proven themselves throughout the years and I've had, I personally know both of them, so it's a hard decision. But we have to make a choice. And, and this is just a recommendation from what I believe. So it's not binding to anything. So your motion is to?
Okay. I move to provide YSD's endorsement of Marlene Bullard of Torneo ISD for the 2023 Region 19 position of the Tasby Board of Directors.
Click move. Okay, we have a motion and it's been seconded by Mr. Bustillos. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, none opposed. Action item number four, request to the Texas Education Agency for class size waivers. Is there any discussion? No further discussion. May I have a motion? Mr. Bustillos?
Mr. President, I move to approve the district's admission to the Texas Agent, Texas Education Agency for the class waiver to allow certain pre-K fourth grade classes to exceed the 22 to one ratio.
We have a second by Ms. Woodrow. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. We have six in favor, one opposed. Action item number five, school district teaching permit for Chinese teacher at Edgemere International School. Is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have an electronic motion? We, we have a motion by Mr. Dwyer and second by Mr. Hernandez. Mr. Dwyer?
I move to approve the issuance of a district teaching permit for EC-12 Chinese for Huan Ko Chinese teacher at Edgemere International School.
We have a second by Mr. Hernandez. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, seven approved, none opposed. Action item number six, approval of teacher certification waiver for a Chinese teacher. Is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have an electronic motion? Mr. Dwyer?
I move to approve the application for certification waiver for Hens Hens Gong teacher at Edgemere International School for one additional year as permissible by the Texas Education Agency.
We have a second by Mr. Hagerty. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, none opposed. Action item number seven, resolution regarding the office of the governor's FY 2023 Bullet Resistance Shield Grant Program. Is there any discussion? No further discussion. May I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Woodrow?
I move to approve resolution regarding the office of the governor's FY 2023 Bullet Resistance Shield Grant Program as presented.
We have a second by Mr. Hagerty. Please cast your electronic votes. Results are in, seven in favor, none opposed. Action item number eight, approve declaration of certain school properties as surplus and authorization to offer for sale. Is there any discussion?
Just real quickly, we had a, we had a discussion about this a few months back about as we're, we're putting properties up for sale and doing all that. I know we kind of said we would task ourselves and with the city to see how we can coordinate and really do some good planning as we move forward to not leave holes in the community. Can we bring that back up and make sure that we do, we are working towards that? And I guess now that we have, we have a full board again, we can do the, we can do that committee and work with you all in the city. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am. We can make that happen. We've already worked with the city on the Ramona Park and we are maintaining it and keeping it in good order for the community. So yes.
And earlier last week, we met with Congresswoman Escobar who expressed the same concern and that is that as our resources become depleted as a result of having to provide services further out east, going out further and further, what we're leaving behind is a wasteland with a lot of property, a lot of land that we should work collaboratively with our city to create spaces that, that increase the value of the land that we're leaving behind. So she's offered to use her influence and her contacts at the city, although she didn't sound very optimistic to try and redirect those resources back, back toward downtown El Paso rather than continue to stretch the city's budget by having to go way out to Socorro in some cases and further east. As a matter of fact, I think she had mentioned that the week before she had met with the city of Socorro, who was expressing concern that A, they didn't have the, the infrastructure that they needed to support the new housing or residential developments, and two, they're really worried about what used to be prime farmland and ranchland disappearing so quickly.
Yeah, we need to ensure that we are, are sustaining our communities and our residential communities too, so they don't become blight. And part of that is making sure we're doing our part with, with the facilities we're leaving behind. So thank you for, for assisting so we can get on board with collaborating with those efforts.
Absolutely.
There's no further discussion. May I have a motion? Mr. Bustillos? Mr. Bustillos?
Mr. President, I move to approve the declaration that the following school's properties, Ramona Elementary on Nichols Road and Del Norte Heights Elementary, are no longer needed for the district purpose. Long term, authorize the superintendent to engage in a licensed real estate broker where is appropriate and offer the properties for sale subject to legal requirements and board approval.
We have a second by Mr. Hagerty. Please cast your votes. Votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, none opposed. We have action item number nine, phase number six, solicitation number 222004 RFP BP-1910 Rio Bravo Middle School, Parkland High School, and Estleta High School upgrades and renovations. Is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have an electronic motion? Mr. Hernandez?
I move to award, I move to approve award of phase number six, solicitation number 222004 RFP BP-1910 Rio Bravo Middle School, Parkland High School, and Estleta High School upgrades and renovations for $1,094,036.26 to Bain's General Contractors towards the guaranteed maximum price with remaining packages totaling the guaranteed maximum price. An estimated cost of construction presented at subsequent board meetings contingent upon final negotiations, in-house council review, and Form 1295 Certificate of Interested Parties.
We have a second by Mr. Hagerty. Please cast your votes. Votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, none opposed. Action item number 10, approval of board designated non-business days for calendar years 2023 and 2024 for the purpose of responding to public information requests under the Public Information Act and approval of respective calendars. Is there any discussion? No further discussion. May we have a motion? Mr. Bustillos?
Mr. President, I move to approve the designated non-business days for the calendar year of 2023 and 2024 for the purpose of responding to the public information request under the Public Information Act and approve the respective calendar as presented.
We have a second by Mr. Hagerty. Please cast your electronic votes. Results are seven in favor, none opposed. At this time, the Board of Trustees has determined that a closed meeting of the Board of Trustees is required to discuss the items set forth in the posted agenda for this date. Such closed meeting is authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, including but not limited to the sections and purposes covered by the following sections of the Texas Government Code 551.071, 72, 73, 74, 76, 82, 127, 821, 83, 84, 87, and 89. Should any final action decision or vote be required with regard to any matter considered in the closed session, the final action decision or vote shall be in the open meeting at a subsequent public meeting with notice. The board will now go into closed session in the Rio Grande Room at 8:52 PM and the action and the item is number one, school safety and security audit, update deployment of security personnel or devices.
I reconvene this meeting of the Board of Trustees with Shane Hagerty, Chris Hernandez, Charlie Bustillos, Mike Dwyer, Connie Woodruff, Katherine Lucero and myself, Cruz Ochoa at 9:43 PM. We don't have any motions to address at this time. So before I accept for the motion to adjourn, so do we have any comments?
Yes, President Ochoa, members of the board, I just wanted to both recognize and thank Chief Rod Liston, who will be moving on into a new chapter in his life, and I believe this is probably his last board meeting, so as you go out the parking structure this evening, he's always been kind enough to wait until we all left safely, wave a hand at --[1632.34][1632.34][laughter] -- is appropriate, since he's abandoning us. I'll just leave it at your discretion to express your sentiments in any way you want to, other than running them over. No, we really appreciate everything that you've done for the school district, you've helped establish, I think, a new culture and climate relative to the safety and security of our students and our staff, you've protected our properties, you've worked well with other agencies, just a completely different culture than what we experienced prior to your arrival, so you have made a huge contribution to this school district. Our plan is to build on it, so thank you on my behalf, and I'm sure the board is appreciative as well. Chief Liston.
Let me add to that. Ever since I've been on the board, I've always felt secure with you, always monitoring our doors, monitoring our parking lots, even when we had that incident over there at Cielo Vista. I mean, your procedures and how you handled it was commendable. I never felt that we were threatened in any way, and you always looked out for our safety, no matter where we were here, where we're at, at the special events center or any other thing. And I just want to thank you for your professionalism and how you deal with us as individual and an individual. I look up to you for who you are, and I wish you well on your next adventure. You'll always have my handshake because I value your friendship and what you've done for SLADA, so thank you very much. All right, so, do we have a button? We have a button here that we don't know what it does.[1776.00][1776.00][laughter] Anyway, do we have a motion, if there's no other comments or any other, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.